Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2023 City Council Meeting. I will now call the meeting to order, and I will ask Mayor Protam Shalysustarsik to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you please take role?
Yes, Councilmember Calwick.
Here.
Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Councilmember Landau.
Here.
Mayor Protam Sustarsik.
Here.
And Mayor Moore.
Here.
All present.
We'll move to the approval of the agenda. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I'll move.
No.
Okay. City Clerk, do you have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, two supplemental communications were received. They've been distributed to the council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you. A call for a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries. We'll move to presentations and recognitions, and the first one is the Lions Club donation to the Seal Beach lifeguards for funds raised at the Duck Drop and Horseshoe Competition. And I'll call upon Marine Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, City Council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to bring up Scott Weir, Derek Moore, and Rosie Ritchie, who I think are going to give me some money. I'm also going to bring up our representative of our lifeguard association, Matt Korb.
Thank you, Council. I really appreciate this. We were really excited to present to the lifeguard association $1,000, as well as $1,000 to the junior guard program. And then, Rosie, you have something to say as well?
I do. First of all, I would like to thank the Lions for inviting the beach house at the river, the opportunity to be part of the event, and it was a lot of fun. It was our first event, and we are so pleased to be able to present Joe with a $500 check for the association.
Great, thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. I know we have some pictures going up here in the slide. This is Derek Moore's brainchild, and he came up with it last year, and it's just a hit. If you've been around during the Duck Drop, I mean, it's just a fantastic event, and it's been really fruitful for us to bring back monies that we can give to the community. So, a big round of applause for Derek and his idea. Matt, thank you so much.
There's also some pictures of the horseshoe tournament, which I happened to win this year, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, I didn't make it past the semi.
I'm just waiting for the next item. I think I'm here also.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you very much. Move to National Beach Safety Week proclamation. The beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Seal Beach represent a world-renowned recreational resource, and Seal Beach residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities. For reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment is appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season. Seal Beach residents and visitors alike must remember to swim near a lifeguard, learn to swim, learn rip current safety, never swim alone, designate a water watcher, alcohol and water don't mix, feet-first water entry, life jackets save lives, observe signs and flags, and beat the heat and block the sun. As Mayor of Seal Beach, I hereby proclaim May 22 to 29, 2023 as National Beach Safety Week in the city of Seal Beach, and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. And I call upon Marine Safety Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Mayor Moore, and City Council. I have just a few comments about Beach Safety Week. I know we're going to have a photo of a rip current up here in a second, which I'm going to talk about, but drowning is the fifth-leading cause of accidental death in the United States among those ages 1 to 14. It's the second-leading cause of unintentional injury-related death behind motor vehicle crashes. Drowning is responsible for deaths among children 1 to 4 more than any other cause. Fatal drowning is the only, the tip of the iceberg for aquatic injuries. For every child who dies from drowning, another five receive emergency department care for non-fatal submersion injuries, which some of these never fully recover. Males are almost 80% of fatal drowning victims. For boating-related drowning deaths, the percentage is even higher. So you went over some of our beach safety tips. I just wanted to talk about a couple of them. Always swim near a lifeguard, and this is because your odds of drowning at a beach protected by lifeguards is 1 in 18 million. Learn to swim.
I'll take those on.
About 10 people die each day from unintentional drowning. Your best insurance agent against drowning is learning to swim. Participation in formal swim lessons can reduce the likelihood of childhood drowning death by 88%. And then, learn rip current safety. If caught in a rip current, relax, and don't, they don't pull you under. You want to relax and swim to the side, not against the current. You can see, this is a big rip current in Seal Beach. This one actually has a name. It's called Freight Train, and it's about at Fifth Street. And when we get big swells, this one pulls, and it could pull past the end of the pier. And you can see, it's the brown murky water with a little bit of white water kind of making an S-turn out there, and you can see the head of the rip is the end of it. So if you relax, even if you make it to the head of the rip, you can float to the side and then swim in where you're not fighting the current. So I appreciate you recognizing National Beach Safety Week, and thank you.
I have a proclamation for you.
Oh, great.
Okay, next we have recognition of former Public Works Executive Assistant Elizabeth Camerina. I'll call upon Public Works Director Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Would like to invite Liz up to their front if I could share a few words about Liz. And while she makes her way up, Elizabeth Camerina, as we all know her as Liz, yes, please, started her Seal Beach career here as a jailer back in February 2008. She was one of the first senior community services, I'm sorry, officers to reopen the Seal Beach jail. Liz, at that time, has already earned the reputation of being efficient, hardworking, a no-nonsense jailer who handled every, even the most uncooperative customer with professionalism and grace. She would always be counted on with her expertise in her field, including current case laws and custodial procedures. While she was working her graveyard shifts, she also pursued a degree in MPA and raised her family. This was obviously no small task. Fast forward to 2021, this is when Public Works recruited Liz to as a department's executive assistant. Liz was eager to learn, eager to soak in all that we had to offer her. We thought that this was just an initial jolt where the energy would eventually fizzle, but boy, were we wrong. The more she learned, the more she was exposed to, the more driven you became. She learned how to write grants, staff report, proclamations, permits, records management, created standard operating procedures, was our accounts guru, and the list just goes on and on. Technical aspects aside, Liz was absolutely customer service-oriented and always put our constituents first. It was her idea to launch a Public Works social media site to help reach out to the public and increase awareness. Liz is a friendly face and can light up the room with her quick wit and contagious laughter. Simply put, she puts our residents first, but she also puts her coworkers and friends at the forefront. She's just selfless like that. I'm sure PD would agree as well. Liz has always been the glue to the department, and she gives it her all to foster that positive working environment. Liz is irreplaceable, and I can't say how tough it is to see her leave, but we all wish her the best as she takes next step in her professional career as the city of Norwalk's new deputy city clerk. Liz, on behalf of the city of Seal Beach, want to say thank you. Thanks so much. Best of luck, and you will always be part of the Seal Beach family. It's not bye, but so long, just for now. Turn this over.
Can I say something? Mayor Moore, good evening, and council members and city staff. My heart is full tonight, and it's very hard to find the words to describe how I feel tonight, but I am extremely grateful for all of you, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Seal Beach. Thank you.
I rest you on a pitcher.
Get her son. Manny.
Alexa. Get this, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
Now you're talking. Now you're talking.
Okay, now we'll move to recognition of Marine Safety Lieutenant Chris Pierce. I'll call upon Marine Safety Chief Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor Moore, City Council. Tonight, we're here to give Chris Pierce a nice send-off, so I have a few words, and then we'll bring him up. Chris started working as a part-time lifeguard in Seal Beach in the summer of 1990. During his time as a part-time guard, he worked many positions: tower guard, area supervisor, and deckhand on the rescue boat. In '93, he was named Unit Guard of the Year, so that's the supervisor that drives the truck, so he was named the Unit Guard of the Year in '93. And that same year, he was given a special commendation from the Seal Beach City Council for his expert and fearless response in an emergency with a pier fire. So on Friday, May 15, in 1993, at 4:45 PM, the Seal Beach Municipal Pier at Zero Tower became engulfed in flames, which quickly grew in intensity. Chris, along with three other lifeguards, tried to extinguish the flames and quickly realized that was not going to work. While two of the lifeguards started making the proper notifications to get the fire department and everybody else down to the pier, Chris, along with another lifeguard, jumped off the pier, swam out to the end of the pier, climbed up the pier to allay the fears of anyone and concerns of anyone that's stuck on the pier. So they went out there to make sure everyone's safe. So then he received a special commendation from the City Council for that. At the end of '93, Chris Pierce was hired by the Orange County Sheriff's Department as a deputy sheriff. He started his career in the Orange County Jail, then he moved on to a patrol position serving the city of Stanton, and eventually made his way to the Harbor Patrol boat in Huntington Harbor. During this time, he continued to work as a beach lifeguard in the summers until 1997. Nine years down the road, Chris was hired as a lifeguard lieutenant for the city of Seal Beach. He was still the lifeguard lieutenant, because that was in 2006, and in 2008, we changed the Marine Safety Department. So anyway, lifeguard lieutenant for two years, and then Marine Safety Lieutenant. One of his many duties was as a training officer. He oversaw our rookie academy, our recurrent training, and our daily training program, all of our training, in fact, and this gave him a chance to influence hundreds of lifeguards over the years. He was able, it gave him the opportunity to effect positive change to our department. He increased the expectations and professionalism of all lifeguard staff, and his influence will last far into the future. With nearly 30 years of public safety between the sheriffs and the Marine Safety Department, it's impossible to know how many lives he has saved with not only his action, but his influence on hundreds of lifeguards over the years. We'd be remiss not to mention and thank Chris's family for putting up with all the weekends, holidays, and long hours Chris has worked. His wife's in the audience behind me, his wife of 30 years, I should say. Kristen is here with him tonight, and he also has twin boys ages 26 and two daughters, Mia, 21, and Jordan, 20. Thanks, Kristen, for putting up with not only all the word stuff, but some of the off-duty shenanigans. So in closing, I want to say thank you to Chris from the city and the Marine Safety Department for all your hard work and commitment over the last 16 years. Your experience, calm demeanor, and clear professionalism will be missed. So with that, I'm going to have Matt Korb, once again, who represents our lifeguard association, come up with, he has a minute to say something, and, Mr. Mayor, if you could join us, we're going to give Chris the plaque and another thing on your way down.
Good evening. So my name is Matthew Korb. I've been a part-time lifeguard here in Seal Beach for over a decade. I'll keep it at that. I have the honor of presenting this award to Lieutenant Pierce on behalf of the Seal Beach Lifeguard Association. We're a nonprofit organization made up of all of the beach lifeguards, and cumulatively, we just really want to say thank you, Lieutenant Pierce, for your 30 years of service to this department. We have two common sayings down at the beach. Smile, you work at the beach, and lifeguarding is the best job you ever have. And working in Seal Beach is truly unique because of the size of our department. We consider ourselves a family, and Lieutenant Pierce has been the forefront of our family for over 30 years. It's also unique because for many of us, this is our first job, working 40 hours a week, and we have true life-or-death responsibilities. As Chief Bailey mentioned, Lieutenant Pierce led the training of every part-time lifeguard working today, and on top of that, he showed us what it meant to be a boss, a manager, a leader, and a husband, a father, and just an honest human being. So on behalf of all of us and the hundreds of lifeguards before me, thank you, Lieutenant Pierce, for your 30 years of service, and I hope this is the best job you ever had.
So to the mayor, to the council, to Jill and all the city staff and everybody that's here, I'm just going to take a couple seconds here to touch on a couple things. These guys stole a lot of my thunder. They hit on a couple of the points I was really going to go for, but I'm lucky tonight. I have quite a bit of my family here. My parents, my in-laws, my brother. That's my brother, Bob. He looks like me. And then I also have my work family sitting over here. I got all the guys and girls, so pretty excited about it. Okay. I want to tell two quick stories. First story was back in 1992. It was August, and I'm really clear on the date because this was when I got married. So 19 years old, first day back after my honeymoon, and I'm up at Tower One, which is right next to the pier, and there's a rip current that pulls there. And rip started pulling, there's a couple kids out there, so I do what all these guys back here do, grab your fins, grab your can, call it in, and go. On the way out, the rip blew up, and these two kids that were out there started going. They're going out, and it was apparent they were not swimmers. So I'm doing the grind and just going for it, watching them, and they're not doing well, but it's manageable, I keep going, and then the worst possible thing happens as I'm swimming out on my first day back to work after I got married. I feel the wedding ring start to slip. So about 15 yards away, and I feel it slipping, and I'm like, well, this is what we signed up for. I get about 10 feet away, off it goes, get the can booty of the kids. Kids were good, brought them back in, talked to them, got them to their parents, and then the work started. Then I got to call my wife. So I called my wife, and to her credit, she was extremely understanding. That's come in handy in this line of work. That was an induction for both of us about a little bit of what public safety is. It's, you're going to give a little bit, but it's for the big picture. So that day, we gave up the wedding ring, but the kids were good, so that went well. And she's been, she's been awesome for the last 30 years in tolerating all this stuff. My folks, my in-laws, everybody, for all the days where, nope, he can't be here, Chris has to work. I swear, I was really working all those days. And it's nice today that they get to see me up here and show how really, how really important I am. The, and then the second scenario for me that kind of turned the page in this, in this world is back in, I think it was 2009, working as my, my current position, my former position. You get a sixth sense, like you're not a sixth sense, but you kind of, just out of the peripheral, you can see when things are off. And as I sat at my desk doing very important lieutenant duties, something happened out on the beach. There's just a quick flash of something, and as I look up, I see the lifeguard from that same Tower One jump off, run over to a mom, and grab the kid. Usually that's preceded by a phone call or a radio traffic or something, and none of that happened, so I knew something was off. Ran upstairs to find out what it was, and by the time I got just from the second floor to the third floor, lifeguard's handing the baby back and climbing back up on the tower. And what it was, this was a young toddler who was in the sand and had packed so much sand in the baby's mouth, it couldn't breathe. So mom doesn't know what to do. Mom's freaking out, runs towards the lifeguard. His word is, I just knew what it was. So he jumped down, did the back blows, cleared the airway, handed the baby back, and went back to work. So for me, that's the point that Joe and that Korb made, was it's not me doing it anymore. Now it's these guys doing it. And I've been really lucky to be able to, to be involved with the training of all these people. When I started back in, you know, '90, it was, I saw it from that perspective, and now I see it from the other side. There's no doubt we've had struggles in recent years. We couldn't get numbers out. We've been, we've been trying and trying and trying. I'm definitely not going to go down the rabbit hole. I don't think it's a coincidence to say that when I started, minimum wage was $4.25 an hour. We were paid $8.50 an hour, you know? We don't have nearly that gap anymore. And again, I'm not, I'm not going to go out in a bad way, but in eight years, our lifeguard's got $2 more an hour over an eight-year period, when minimum wage jumped up about $5 or $6 in that same time period. So as far as these part-timers, they're the ones that are saving the babies, they're the ones that are dropping rings. During COVID, they're the ones that are getting yelled at for people having to move on the beach and all the stuff that they had to do out there. That was the work that these guys were doing, and girls. I'm definitely not short-sighting our females. They've been amazing. It's been an incredible career. I've been very lucky to be able to train them. I hope moving forward, we can get those recruitment numbers up so that we can start getting bigger numbers to train more people. I'm so proud of the involvement that these kids have in society when they finish, and I like to think that we, as a department and as a family and a city, get to be a part of teaching them to be those better people that are actually doing things rather than filming it and getting involved. So for me, thank you all. First time I've been here without a uniform, so it's kind of cool. I'm in like the retiree uniform, and I knew it was summer, so I get to wear the rain spooner, but thank you, genuine thank you to everybody. I've appreciated all of it, and I'm excited to start the next part with my awesome wife.
Thank you so much for all of your service. I love the ring story. Does any other council members have any comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's a good kid.
So says dad.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Moore, City Council, and, or council members and city staff. My name is Amanda Schlumpf Bernardino. My family moved to Seal Beach in 1986. My mom taught at McGaw for about 25 years. We have been proud residents of Seal Beach for the last 37 years this month of June. I'm here with Ed Hirsch. His family moved to Seal Beach in 1968, and Heather, who did not give me the year, but she's been here a long time, too.
Over 23 years or something.
23 years, her family. Ed and Heather and I and Kane all serve on the advisory board for the Seal Beach Pride, Inc., and we had our event this weekend. I am here tonight as the lead of the Seal Beach Pride Advisory Board to thank the businesses who were clear in their support and who worked to make Seal Beach an inclusive community that is capable of seeing this event for the beauty and diversity that it brings each year. And in spite of the less-than-desirable weather that we had on Saturday, it brought out colorful people with love for everyone and money to spend in those businesses on Main Street as they were encouraged to shop and eat while they attended our event. Our community is made better when everyone feels comfortable in it, and especially the students who grow up here. The photos being shared online are showing a tremendous amount of joy in the faces of all who participated. We are making Seal Beach a safe place for all. The following Main Street businesses posted signs in their windows to promote this Pride event on Saturday, donated funds, and prepared special menu items for Pride attendees. Coast Pizza ran down in the middle of day and donated pizza for all of our, all of our volunteers. So I want to give out a huge heartfelt thanks to the following businesses that are, that participated. The Hangout, Avia's El Rancito, Jennings &amp; Allen, Coast Pizza, O'Malley's, Eb, Percival Symphony, Hennessy's, Brewster's Ice Cream, Up Up &amp; Away, the Kite Store, Knock Knock, the Toy Store, Main Street Cicly, the Bike Shop, Calypso Juice, Humble Maker, Starbucks, The Dyed Pair, the CDB Hub next to O'Malley's, and Crema Cafe. And Humble Maker, yes. And we just want to thank all of them for helping to participate, making such a great event for us on Saturday. Thank you.
And I wanted to add a little personal touch of a, just a small story from that day that might share why that event was really important. I was running the, our safety team there, and so I had the opportunity to meet a lot of the people that were. a lot of the people that were attending that event. And there was one individual in particular who's a resident here in Seal Beach, who came by himself and looked a little lost, because, I mean, when have you not felt lost when you're at a party by yourself? And I went up to this gentleman, and it turns out that he's deaf. So, you know, I took the time to, to, you know, write out on my, on my, on my notes app and communicate with this young man. And we're very fortunate that we actually had a number of, of activities at the event that were accessible to our, both our folks who are in wheelchairs and our folks who are deaf and other members of the disabled community. And I think that's a fantastic example of, I'm not deaf, I'm not disabled, I don't live that life experience, but I had the opportunity to provide that accessibility and provide that, that safety in that community for him. We did that as, as our event, we were able to, to provide that. And that's a wonderful example about how intersectionalism matters. And the people who are in this community, who you may not personally relate to, are still members of this community who deserve a safe place to celebrate themselves. And I'm glad we were able to provide that. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dawn Southern, I've been a resident for fifty-six years, my family's been here since the thirties. First off, I'd never thought I'd say this, but I'd like to thank Jill Ingram for allowing the group to hold their event, even though you were pressured from former council members, business owners, and people in the community, I want to thank you. I also want to thank the police, who stood there and allowed everybody to have the freedom of speech, no matter what group they were from. I watched the event all day and was filled with laughter, happiness, and music and organizations that cater to the LGBTQ community. I am not part of the pride event group, I just met Stephanie Wade at the end when I helped to clear up. I'd like to thank Stephanie for stepping up to the plate, even after her character was repeatedly being attacked, slandered with rumors and lies in this community. There is someone sitting up at the desk before me that I asked to call off their friends and supporters, who have repeatedly started to rumors to ruin Stephanie Wade's reputation in the community. As a community leader, I ask that you embrace Stephanie's strengths as an ally, to help make our community stronger and not divided as it has been. I have seen us so divided, we don't have to agree on politics, religion, or who's on first base, but moving forward, we need to put aside our differences and work together to meet the needs of Mayberry by the Sea. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rosie Ritchie, and I'm a partner at the Beach House at the Beach Lot down at First Street, formerly known as The River's End. For all the years I've been coming to Seal Beach, the public restrooms have always been open for the duration of the beach parking lot hours. Recently, the city has decided to close the public restrooms at the First Street Beach Lot, daily at 7:00 PM, when the beach lot is open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The early closing of the public restrooms continue to be an issue for the Beach House. I shared in previous emails that large numbers of beachgoers continue to use our restrooms at the restaurant. What is most concerning is the safety, the safety of our staff is now in jeopardy. When the already angry people come to enter the restaurant to use the restrooms, barefoot, shirtless, and in bikinis, they're told that the restrooms are for customers only. Our staff are now being verbally attacked and threats are being made against them at the restaurant. It has been witnessed by, it has been witnessed that a man has relieved himself on the wall of the building punishing us because the city has closed the public restrooms. When I open the restaurant each morning, I routinely walk the premises. On Saturday morning, very early, I did my routine walk around the building, only to find the picture that I sent to all of you, Jill and city council. An angry beachgoer had nowhere to deposit his human waste and chose to do it at the door at the women's restroom. To make matters worse, your staff unlocked the bathroom door, walking over the mess that was on the floor, going into the women's restroom. A solution, well, sorry. As a real estate agent, understanding tenant landlord relationships, it's a responsibility of a landlord to make sure the common area is safe, clean, and free of liability. This is not the case here. We have young employees in their teens, who should not have to take the verbal abuse that they do from these customers that are trying to use our restroom because the public restrooms are closed. They are blaming the Beach House for their early closure, and it's not fair to my staff. We've got young, vibrant teens who have to go home a mess because they have been, they have been abused verbally by these people, and they're simply doing their job in telling them that the restrooms are for the restaurant patrons. We want to be proud of this investment that we have made. As you all know, we've put over $2 million into making a beautiful establishment. And we want to focus on bringing revenue to the city instead of all of this nonsense. And I love what the lifeguard said, we want to be able to tell our employees, smile, you work at the beach. Thank you.
I'm a resident of Old Town Seal Beach, and I'm here to, today to share an image of something that's been a source of annoyance for me since the installation of it in January. You'll see it coming in a second. You don't recognize it, the image, the item in the, the image, it's the parking kiosk for the 100-block parking lot on 10th Street, on the 10th Street side. As you can see, this kiosk location clearly blocks the sidewalk. It does so even more when it's in use. And the reason why I bring this up is two-fold. First, obviously, the kiosk needs to be relocated in a more suitable spot. And second, this issue kind of highlights a larger problem in the way our city sometimes operates. When addressing an issue, the city fails to consider a bigger picture outside of the problem that they're trying to solve. And so the, the issue I'm referring to today is paid parking on Main Street. And so I have several questions and comments about this issue for the city's parking consultant, which I intend to bring up during the proposed community outreach meetings. However, I would like to mention that I do acknowledge that there are pros and cons with this issue, but it's obvious that if implemented correctly, paid parking on Main Street is the right solution. But getting back to what I said before, what's the bigger picture that the, the city's missing on paid parking in Main Street? Well, first off, paid parking on Main Street should be first and foremost, a parking management solution to encourage people, if possible, to travel to Main Street by alternative modes of transportation, since the car is, for many reasons, by far the worst option. I know budgets are tight, and some of you are looking at this from a budgetary, budgetary perspective instead, but I do want to mention that any decision made under budgetary duress, especially this one, is probably being made for all the wrong reasons. But more importantly, what's really missing from the big perspective here is the second half of the equation. We're essentially telling people that if they want to drive to Main Street, they rightfully have to pay for it. So the natural follow-up question is, okay, then how can I get to Main Street without driving? Because that's the thing, we want a lot of people to visit Main Street, we just don't want them to bring their cars. The problem is, is that the city's development practices has essentially intertwined the two to the point where it's assumed that people equal cars and cars equal people. I understand Mayor Moore's frustration with this, because the proposal's basically probably being felt as a tax on anybody outside of Old Town and the Hill. However, I'd like to point out that the main reason why Main Street is so great is because of its pedestrian-oriented development. So stringing, true-horning cars into it at any scale is never gonna work. To address this issue, the city needs to ensure that all revenues generated from the parking fees are reinvested back to Main Street in the form of providing those outside of its median vicinity with convenient access to Main Street without the need of a car. I like to ride my bike a lot, so obviously I'm a little biased towards bike infrastructure as, as example of this. However, e-bikes have dramatically increased the range that people are willing to ride, which is why the city should leverage this opportunity to improve bike infrastructure. Doing so, people outside of Old Town and the Hill would be more inclined to ride a bike to Main Street instead of driving. One way to achieve this is by completing the OC Loop bike segment between, along PCH between Seal Beach Boulevard and Anderson Street. This would create a, result in the creation of a separated bike and pedestrian path, creating better access to Main Street for residents of Surfside. Additionally, implementing protected bike lanes along Lampson, Seal Beach Boulevard, North Gate Road, and PCH would provide communities of North Seal Beach better bike access to Main Street as well. Regarding other forms of mobility that could give, that could give people access to Main Street, the senior shuttle could be extended to operate on weekends, and the OCTA 42 bus runs from the doorsteps of many of the North Seal Beach communities right into the heart of Seal Beach, making it a perfect mobility option for people to utilize. However, the city would need to discuss frequencies with the OCTA, because while it runs frequently at anywhere between twenty to thirty minutes on a majority of its route, half the buses don't go all the way through to Seal Beach. Therefore, at our end, the frequencies are more like fifty minutes. Moving on to the immediate vicinity of Main Street, I was very encouraged to hear Council Member Kalmak mention a few weeks ago the possibility of a small shuttle system that could provide better mobility options to Main Street for the people of Old Town and the Hill. But so now getting to the item before you today regarding the consideration of an ad hoc parking committee. I fail to see, I fail to see any value in it. Firstly, I assume that community outreach meetings and surveys mentioned in the parking consultant's presentation would already provide residents with similar opportunity to provide feedback. And secondly, and more importantly, I believe the city's time and money would be better spent working with a consultant.
Thirty seconds to wrap up.
Secondly, and most importantly, I believe the city's time and money would be better spent working with consultant experience and alternative modes of transportation to see how the city could give all its residents a convenient way to access Main Street without the need of a car, because we need to break the concept that Seal Beach's health is, Main Street's Seal Beach's health is directly linked to its parking availability.
Any other public comments? Okay, and move to the city attorney report. City Attorney Gurelli, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report other than to say that the attorney for the Beach House has my contact information and I'm available to discuss bathroom maintenance at any time.
Yeah, thank you. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple items tonight. Wanted to thank, I know we had most of the council last Thursday at the Marine Safety badge pinning ceremony, where Chief Bailey and his staff team, I know we had standing room only here in the council chambers, as, as most of you know, to, for the badge pinning and oath of office for our newly-promoted Marine Safety Lieutenant Nick Bolin, as a result of Chris Pierce's retirement, and our new Marine Safety Officer Jeremy Jenks. So just wanted to thank you for making time to attend that. I know, from my perspective, I don't remember, at least from the Marine Safety perspective, a badge pinning ceremony that was really that nice and meaningful, and it was so nice to see so many family members here, and we had a full, I think every member of our, our part-time lifeguard team was here as well. Also wanted to mention, I know last month, council members Kalmak and Landau, as well as several members of our staff team, met with the Naval Weapons Station team, including their CEO Jessica O'Brien, their PIO Greg Smith, and other members of their team. And just wanted to mention briefly, and I know both Joe, you and Lisa may mention some of this as well, just for the public's benefit, some of the things that we got updates on from them and that we talked about jointly between the Navy and the city was the status of their pier ammunition project, the pier area reutilization project, which is up to twenty-nine acres at the corner of Seal Beach Boulevard, the northeast corner of Seal Beach Boulevard and PCH, to support their military families and retain control over underutilized property while putting it to best use. And they mentioned that they anticipate an RFP solicitation, which is scheduled for sometime later this fall. Talked about the reopening of Barney's Beach, following completion of construction in that area, which was really great news to hear, since it had been closed down since the beginning of the pandemic in 2020. The Surfside Beach replenishment project, environmental cleanup, I know there's several environmental cleanup projects that are reaching the stage where they're gonna need to start holding community meetings here in Seal Beach to give the public a chance to comment, and they anticipate those meetings will take place sometime this fall. And then just some upcoming exercises over the summer as well. And as all of you know, Greg Smith does a wonderful job of doing outreach to our community and kind of giving the council and our staff and the community an update when those exercises are happening, since there's typically some loud noises. And then just some other additional things, we talked about the agreement between the Navy and, and Orange County Fire Authority with respect to their Navy Fire Department coming off the base for fire and basic life support medical responses, as well as an agreement between the Navy and our Police Department, concurrent jurisdiction agreement between those two agencies. And then we talked as well about an update on where the city's at with our, our housing element, especially with respect to the fact that they've partnered with us very closely with one of the sites that we have identified in our draft housing element that's on the Navy property. Also wanted to mention, I know I sent an email to all of you last week, one of the newest Orange County grand jury reports that was released regarding historic rain and drought conditions, and I, I thought especially for both council members Steel and Landau, these are, you know, typically, the Orange County Grand Jury will take, take up specific causes that they want to study that results in a report that they issue and release. And then the caveat with that, though, is agencies have ninety days per the Penal Code to review and respond to findings and recommendations in that report, which takes up a significant amount of staff time. And obviously, we're not the only agency that needs to do that, but I think I'd really like you to keep in mind the time that it takes for us, in addition to everything else we have on our plate, to respond to that. It's a very time-consuming effort, just to read through that report and then to have to draft responses to findings and recommendations. And if that wasn't impactful enough, we were notified today that a second report was just released today by the grand jury regarding group homes that were, require again, additional study by our staff team. So there's two Orange County Grand Jury reports, it's gonna require a significant amount of our staff time. And I, you know, I'm not disputing the function and purpose of the grand jury in these reporting efforts, I just want, even for issues like, for example, the one that was released today, group homes, it may not be as relevant to the city of Seal Beach, it still requires us to read the report and then respond to specific recommendations, again, when we've already got an overburdened staff with multiple priorities on our plate. And then finally, it's been a, it's been a really busy few weeks since our last council meeting, so I just wanted to share some upcoming agenda items that you can look forward to seeing here within the next several months. Animal Control Services presentation, along with that, we have Animal Control Services agreements with both the Westminster Adoption Group and Services, and as well as the Huntington Beach Wetlands and Wildlife Care Center. And then the Chevron Station at PCH and 13th Street project that will be coming before you. And then, just as a reminder, some of the longer-term efforts that we anticipate coming to council, potentially later, is the adoption of the housing element, the zoning code update, as all of you know, which is related to the housing element, accessory dwelling unit ordinance revision to meet state code, and then the adoption of the local coastal plan. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up on what we anticipate coming before you here in the near term. And that concludes my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to council comments, general council member comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. And we'll start with Councilmember Kalmak.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, with regard to the discussions that we're having with the Navy and the updates that we're getting, this is, at least in my time, the most interactive relationship that we've had with the Navy for a long time. And they've been very, very open and, you know, and forthcoming with things that, that they are planning and that they want to engage with us. And so it's, it's nice to have that relationship with a 5,000-acre neighbor next door that can do pretty much what they want, when they want.
Six square miles.
Yeah. And our last Orange County Fire Authority Board meeting, we've got, I would say it's good news on paper, we'll see how it shakes out, but in reviewing the budget for Orange County Fire, based on, on the changes in terms of unfunded pension liabilities that Orange County Fire has been paying down at a very rapid rate, and the fact that within the next several years, the difference between the, the employees that were on the former system and will be on what's called the Peppera Retirement System. system and will be on what's called the Peppera Retirement System, that by fiscal year 2627, we could be seeing some reductions in our contract price, which for us is very, very significant. So we keep our fingers crossed that that does come to fruition. That's all I have tonight.
Councilmember Steele.
Golden Rain Foundation is a governing body for leisure world out there, which is my district. 100% of my district is inside leisure world. Golden Rain Foundation is changing their government system as of tomorrow. They're going from 11 or 13 different subcommittees that the residents have had to deal with on various things for the last 50 years, down to four committees. And so it's kind of a nice consolidation of committees. And so people won't have to go through multiple committees to get things done out in leisure world. And that kicks off tomorrow. Tomorrow afternoon, the GRF Board is remand with the new candidates that have just been elected. All of the mutual boards have just recently gone through their own election processes. And so it's like a monumental event tomorrow afternoon at 2:00. If anybody else is interested in going with me, I'll be there. But nonetheless, that's what's going on out there. I go to all the GRF meetings, basically to keep an ear to the ground as what's happening in my district and one of our key neighbors here in Seal Beach, which is leisure world. We have 9,000 people that live in there. And so it's like a significant portion of our population. So I also attended the Orange County Library Advisory Council a few weeks ago. And that was very interesting. It was my first time at such a meeting. So they were highlighting their summer reading programs and things at their libraries throughout Orange County. And I attended the two-day JPIA Newly Elected Conference. As a newly elected official here in Seal Beach, I got to go to this conference and learn about my new responsibilities as a council member and what to do and what not to do, and how to do it, and best way to get things done and things like that. It was very informative. Running for office is always kind of like one thing, when you're outside looking in and you're invited by the newspaper to answer a couple of questions every week and posit what you would do if you were in office. And now that you're in office, you find out that things are infinitely more complex. You find out, one of the observations I found most interesting at this conference was very often, your friends during your campaign are your enemies when you're in office. And your enemies in your campaign are your friends when you're in office. And so that's not been my experience quite yet, but I'm looking forward to making some new friends here in not distant future. I also flew to Cameroon for the graduation of our Cameroon Biblical Seminary class of 2023. And so that was the highlight of my last couple of weeks here. Thank you.
Mayor Potemse Starsek.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended on Memorial Day the submarine memorial's tolling of the boat ceremony. I also went down to the beach. And I'd like to thank the lifeguards for all they do for, as we start this summer season, it's a big job. And we appreciate all you do for us in saving lives and keeping people safe. So thank you for that. I attended an event in Los Alamos called Good Morning Los Alamos. They erected a great big white wedding kind of tent, or maybe like some other event, at Little Cottonwood Park and invited the public to come in and meet the city staff and ask questions and hear all about the city and whatever. And anyway, it was a very nice free event for people to come. And they even gave them food. So I attended the Recreation and Parks Committee meeting regarding some proposed swap out of play equipment at Heather Park. Thank you to that committee for their comments, their comments and input into that process. I attended a Navy Restoration Advisory Board meeting. They apparently, I wasn't sure exactly what it was, but apparently a lot of contaminated sites around the base. And they explained what they're doing and how things are going and how that process is going. And thank you to the people that volunteer on that committee. I attended a meeting of the College Park East Neighborhood Association, the Orange County Sanitation Operations Committee, and the Marine Safety Pinning Ceremony, which was a really nice, really nice event. So thank you. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Lando.
First, I'd like to discuss the bathroom issue. I don't know if it's possible that the bathrooms stay open until 10. I don't know how that would work. But I am concerned for the safety of the people that are down there. And then also, just if, you know, the parking lot is open until 10, I think that we really need to have the bathrooms open until 10. Just, you know, for, people are paying for parking. You know, I think the bathrooms should be open until 10. So the picture that I saw was a little disturbing. So I just thought that, which needs to be addressed. And then, other than that, I had, it was wonderful to see how many people attended the Memorial Day Service at the Submarine Memorial at the Naval Weapons Station, hosted by the US submarine veterans. And then also another awesome event hosted by the Lions Club at Eisenhower Park. Both events were very well organized and very well attended. Also, congratulations again to Nick and Jeremy for their promotions. That was great to see, again, standing room only. Jill covered the Navy meeting very well, so I don't need to go over that again. And then also, I also attended the Joint Power Insurance Authority session for newly elected officials. It was great information and great training that I received that will help me represent my community better. That's it. Thank you.
So I also went to the Memorial Day ceremonies, went to the submarine memorial and the ceremony in Eisenhower Park with councilmembers Lando, Kalmak, and Mayor Potemse Starsek. A few years ago, I found out one of my friends from the Seal Beach Dads Bowling League was, his father was on one of the memorials at the submarine memorial. So it was special. He was there, and we got a picture, and it was a special moment. He was on a submarine in the Pacific during World War II. The Lions did an incredible job refurbishing the submarine memorial and also putting the ceremony on in Eisenhower Park. I went to the Los Alamos High School graduation. I was honored to be there. Quite a long ceremony with about 800 graduates. I got to meet with the supervisor of the school board and four of the Los Alamos council members. The Los Alamos Choir was amazing, as usual. And 100% of the students graduated this year in 2023, which hasn't happened in a long time. And so it was a fun event. Marine, I went to the Marine Safety Pinning Ceremony, as the city manager said. The staff did a very nice job organizing this. And thanks to, and congratulations to Nick Bolin. And it was nice to see the standing room only here in the chamber. And that's all I have. And we'll move on to council items. Item A, Amendment to the City Council Rules of Procedures Adding City Council Norms and City Council and City Manager Commitments. I'll call upon City Clerk Harper.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and City Manager Ingram. The item before you tonight is an amendment to the City Council Rules of Procedures Adding City Council Norms and City Council and City Manager Commitments. City Council Policy 100-3 was adopted by the City Council on November 9, 2009, to define the rules, responsibilities, and expectations of the council and staff. At the April 4, 2023 Strategic Planning Workshop, the facilitator provided an overview of the current council's rules of procedures, followed by council discussion to implement the newly stated city council norms and the city council and city manager commitment. There was consensus from the mayor and the city council to amend the council's rules of procedures, Council Policy 100-3, to add the newly stated city council norms and city council and city manager commitments. The addition of the city council norms and the city council and city manager commitments will be identified as Section 11, City Council Norms and City Council and City Manager Commitments, subsection 11A, City Council Norms, and subsection 11B, City Council and City Manager Commitments. While Section 11 is currently identified as issuance, it will be amended and identified as Section 12 issuance, as noted by the red font on Page 12 and 13 of Attachment D. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 7411 to amend the City Council Policy Rules and Procedures, Council Policy 100-3, by adding a new section, City Council Norms and City Council and City Managers' Commitments and other minor numerical changes. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any council member comments? Okay. Can I call for a motion in a second?
I had a question.
Oh, Mayor Potemse.
It was in the proposed rules of decorum, number 10, said that there was a penalty for violating the rules of decorum at council meetings. What, I just wondered what kind of penalty.
Well, there's a few things that can happen for, and just to be clear, this is not part of the changes to the policies. This was already in the policies. It's a violation of the penal code to actually disrupt a public meeting. The standard for disruption to make it criminal is actually very high. That rarely, rarely happens. What the Brown Act authorizes is that if somebody violates the rules of decorum, the mayor can issue a warning. And if the disruption continues despite that warning, the person can be asked to leave the room. Those are the consequences for violating the rules of decorum.
I just wasn't sure if this was a payment or what.
No, no.
What exactly it was.
You don't have to bring your checkbook.
Let's see. Most of these. Council members have a right to speak their opinion, but once a decision is made, respect the majority's decision. I recognize that at a meeting. Is that, is not a long-term, you can't ever speak again regarding a subject? Or what exactly, what exactly does that mean or entail?
Well, I think that that's more of a guideline than a hard rule. And of course, the council is free to change its mind if there's a shift in policy and an item is added. Well, for example, if the council approves one thing one year, and there's a decision to change the policy in another year, I don't think that that norm is intended to prevent the council from exercising its policy discretion. I think it's intended primarily at the meeting to respect the decision that's made by the council at that time.
And then maintain a citywide perspective while being mindful of our districts. That, you know, that makes sense, too. But we always, we do represent our districts. And so that's always part of our thinking and making sure that all citizens of Seal Beach are treated fairly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call for a motion in a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Please vote.
All right. We'll move to item B, consideration of my request to establish an ad hoc parking committee to review the parking, city parkings management program and evaluate and advise on a proposed paid parking program for the Main Street area. I'll call upon City Clerk Harper.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and members of the City Council and City Manager Ingram. The item before you tonight is for consideration of Mayor Moore's request to establish an ad hoc parking committee to review the city's parking management program and evaluate and advise on a proposed paid parking program for the Main Street area. At the May 22, 2023 City Council meeting, Julie Dixon from Dixon Resources Unlimited provided a detailed update on the parking management program that included an analysis of the parking management program. Additionally, at that meeting, council directed staff to begin town hall meetings and outreach efforts related to the parking program and provide public education related to the concept of paid parking on Main Street. One minute, please. Can't find my cursor here. Sorry. I'm on the wrong page here. One minute. Okay, I'm sorry. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council consider the request of Mayor Moore to establish an ad hoc parking committee that should include two city council members and two police department staff liaisons appointed by the city council to engage in focused discussion, to review the city's parking management program, and to advise on the proposed paid parking program for Main Street. That concludes my report, and I'll give it back to Mayor Moore.
Thank you. Before I get to this item, I'd just like to say I really appreciate all this staff that deal with parking in Seal Beach on a day-to-day basis. You're all greatly appreciated. Thank you for all you do. I realize that we've come a long way in the past few years to make it more clear and easier for residents to park throughout the city. And I spoke with our city attorney on this, and this has two parts. The first will be to discuss and vote on whether to have the committee. And then the second will be to vote on who is on the committee. So I've had a few residents reach out to me to request a parking committee be created. And I don't see any reason any of us should not want to listen to our residents, what they have to say. We've gotten the Parking Consultants' expert opinion for the past few years on parking. However, at our meetings, we've not really gotten feedback from residents or businesses. And I know we agreed to do a few town hall meetings, but I would like our residents to have a seat at the table to determine how the town hall meetings should be run and give us specific input on paid parking on Main Street. All I'm asking is we be thoughtful on this and get more information to create a constructive process before we make a decision, and more data that would actually justify or not justify a change. And also get some additional feedback from Seal Beach residents, business owners, and transportation experts, including Julie Dixon, who's been very helpful with parking in general. And I'd like to discuss, I'd like us to create an ad hoc committee that will meet for a few months to provide some direction to determine how the town hall meetings will be run, and also give a recommendation on paid parking on Main Street and any alternatives for improving parking in general from residents' business perspective. I see this as being a two- to three-month process, and then the town halls will happen. And we should be able to decide before the end of the year on this. The purpose of this committee is to give a strong presence, not just as attendees of a town hall, but more participation in the process from our residents before deciding on paid parking on Main Street. And if this is something that sounds reasonable, I'd like to call for a motion to create this committee. Before I do that, I'll ask for council comments.
A couple of things. As the mayor has said, we've been meeting with our professional consultant Julie Dixon on parking in general for our entire city. With regard to the Main Street situation, we've had a couple of presentations by her presenting the data that she has gathered. And it has been her opinion and her advice to us as our consultant that by having paid parking on Main Street, you would actually improve the turnover of the spaces and make them more available to more people. I'm a somewhat data-driven person, and I tend to believe what she's saying. With regard to the ad hoc committee and the desire to have more input from our residents, I would be somewhat shocked if any resident would be in favor of paid parking. I'm not in favor of paid parking, but I'm looking at certain realities that we as a city are dealing with. And, you know, it's becoming my conclusion based on the data from our consultant and and the input that I've received, positive and negative, from residents, that an ad hoc committee will just sort of kick the can down the road. The, if we're going to have town hall meetings, the town hall meetings can be adjusted to, by us, by, excuse me, by our staff to allow as much time as we possibly can give to as many people that want to show up and express their opinion. So I'm not sure, I'm not seeing what the advantage of having an ad hoc committee that is made up of just two of us, that that's going to be an accurate representation of the council's opinions and that to once again draw on our police department to provide staff support and preparation for these meetings. So I, you know, I believe that I understand the issue. You know, I live in Old Town. I had a business on Main Street. I think I know and understand the perceptions that people have about the parking situation. And I just don't agree that we need, you know, an ad hoc committee to review it further and further and further.
Okay. The question right now is, should we put an ad hoc committee together instead of the question and open up for public comment, which is part of the town hall process that we have established already? And we can, we can change that process to get as much input from the public as we want. So I'm not seeing a particular value to an ad hoc committee, especially if they're not going to come out with, quote-unquote, "a recommendation." Or if they do come out with a recommendation, I'm not sure how valid the recommendation would be from just two city council members on that.
It's not just two city council members. It's one person appointed by each council member as well.
Oh, I see. I didn't understand that. But still, the ad hoc concept to me sounds more like it's going to take longer. We're going to expand the whole process by three months, maybe more. You say three months, but I, one of the things I learned in the JPIA newly-elected conference, they said, "Our job is not necessarily just to count heads in our district and find out who's in favor of what and act in that way." We have a complete picture. We need to get a complete picture of City Council and have all of our questions answered. But we have to approach this from a holistic perspective. And our holistic perspective right now in this city, as well as many other cities throughout the country, throughout California, throughout Southern California, is that we have some very big challenges in our financial future. And I think anything we do that could potentially take away a potential revenue source for any length of time is kind of somewhat irresponsible. I think the town halls are going to be good. I look forward to hearing from people, and I think their input is going to be interesting. As you know, Tom, Mayor, I did a survey of my own a few months ago, and it was 70% are opposed to parking on Main Street. So does that mean that we as a city have to forego whatever the benefits would be to the business community and whatever the benefits would be to the city? Because 70% of our people don't want parking on Main Street. When the technology has changed, when they don't have a complete picture of what the, how the technology works and how convenient the new technology is and the app on the phone and the rest of all that stuff, I think, I think we need to get on with it and get toward the town halls as opposed to putting this into a committee personally.
I am always in favor of public outreach. And I, I sat through, I think, a year and a half meetings, town hall meetings where we discussed parking in Old Town. And I don't remember paid parking being, it may have been mentioned, but I don't think it was, it was addressed to any length. I have not heard from my residents, and I would be happy to hear from my residents. I also, at the last meeting, we talked about this. I, there was a member from the chamber here who said that they would like input from the businesses. So I, I would like, I don't have any opposition to a committee. If it's a short, short committee, we had ad hoc committees for housing element and various other things. When we had that presentation here by Julie Dixon, she had things flashing up there on the screen that I, I mean, I'm a data person too, and I could not understand those. They were, you know, that were flashing up there. So I appreciate a process where someone who's willing to commit, if they have questions on the data, they can ask, that they be brought back if they have questions about other cities. I mean, I realize that that can happen at a town hall too, but most people are not able to come in every single meeting at 7:00 and, and visit the meeting. We may not be picking up everyone. And I don't know when the town halls would be, or when the committee meetings would be held. But I would appreciate hearing from the residents, because you know what? Whether they're in favor of it or not, they can make recommendations or suggestions that could be valuable. And I, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to hearing from the public. I'd like to hear from the businesses what they think. And so, you know, before, you know, I'm, I'm sure Julie Dixon does a great job, but our city is not exactly the same as every city. And I would like to get input from the residents who are closest to Main Street. You know, I, anyway, I would support, I would support having a, an ad hoc committee of a short length.
It's amazing how passionate people are about parking in this town. I've been getting a lot of phone calls, a lot of feedback. We have some very astute residents that recognize that we're not at 85%. I've gotten a lot of outreach from my constituents. And I think at this point, you know, I got phone calls on my way here, actually. So at this point, I'm really thinking, you know, I think we have a duty as council members to listen to our residents. And like I said, I have quite a few that really want to see a committee happen and have it be a citizens' committee, where we would each pick somebody in the community that, you know, possibly has parking experience, you know, that could help facilitate the process and to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. So I think at this point, I am also in favor of the committee.
I'd like to just respond to the data. I mean, I'm a, I manage 50 SQL server databases for my business. I am a database expert. And the data we presented is not very good at the parking consultant. And let me explain. I'd like to see a lot more data. The data at the last meeting showed two hours from two days compared this year versus the past two years. But that's not very much data. I mean, I'd like to see all the data. I'd see a compilation of the data and spread out every day compared this year versus pre-pandemic, because the past three years have been the, you know, we've had pandemic and Parklets, and it's not very accurate data. So I'd like to, you know, explore that on the committee. The presentations seem a little different than what was presented. I looked at the presentation afterward. I remember at the last meeting seeing the sample, and I didn't see that in the presentation afterwards that I looked at in the, in the printed copy. I saw data, I would like to see the pre-pandemic data, as I've stated. Why? Town halls are not the same. Town halls are city-driven, and in this case, by the parking consultant mostly. A committee will be citizen-driven. Residents will ask the city parking consultant questions and then formulate a recommendation. Allow us to collaborate with businesses and residents to formulate a plan. We have intelligent residents, some of which are parking experts. And I would like to hear from them that live in Seal Beach. This is part of our outreach and invite the public to come to these committee meetings and provide more feedback than just a few town hall meetings. And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm not sure how much. I, I, I'd like to add to the recommendation, though. I'm not sure what the, let me see what it was. Two council members and two police. I'd like a representative from each council district that we've been discussing. I don't think that's on here. I'd also like, whether it be a voting member or not, I'd like a representative of the chamber or, or some businesses or something that could, could give input, because I think that is important when you're talking about Main Street too. So, do you want me to try to restate that?
If I might, if the council's goal tonight is to form an ad hoc committee, an ad hoc committee is just a committee of two members of the City Council that meets on about a discreet subject for a defined period of time and not, and without having specific meeting dates. And that's an ad hoc committee that's not subject to the traditional Brown Act requirements. But if the committee is going to have more than two members of the council, including defined members of the community, then that would be, you're basically forming a new committee, like commission, like the planning commission, that would be subject to all the Brown Act requirements and things like that. So I, if you're appointing an ad hoc with two council members and then staff liaisons, that's one thing. But I think adding members of the public is different.
We have a regular committee that we appoint each person from, each councilman would appoint one person.
From the staff or?
From their district.
So I think that that's a different agenda request than to form an ad hoc committee. That's forming a, a brand-new committee that would be subject to all the requirements of the Brown Act.
So is that how the, like the Coyote Committee or the Tree Committee? Is that, those are the same thing? They're, they're, they have to follow the Brown Act also?
Yeah, those aren't ad hoc committees, right? Those are Brown Act bodies, because they're created by formal action of the City Council.
Okay, I guess we suggest we push this out to the next meeting then, as a, if it has to be agendized.
It has to be agendized?
Right, this, yeah, this is not agendized, it's that type of commission.
Okay. Is that okay to?
For my clarification here, since I'm, I'm new to this stuff here, the normal process on something like this question before the City Council is we would have public meetings, and we would hear from the public, and we would be able to take input from the public and from Chamber of Commerce and all the rest of the constituents in that process as well. So an ad hoc committee per se does not facilitate other comments? Are you saying the product, the participates in the public, you know, ad hoc is different than in a town hall process?
The, what I was thinking was it would be one, we would, it would be a person selected from each council district that would be part of the committee. So I guess it would have to be a regular parking committee.
Yeah. I, I would rather, since we are looking at the kind of financial future that we've got right now, and I don't want to, I mean, we, we have a five-year view that's quasi-painful, and we need to get to these kinds of questions, as difficult as they are, as unpopular as they may be. We need to get to these questions sooner, not later. And so I, I don't know how long an ad hoc could last, but my impression is we would take a year or two in an ad hoc committee-type situation and then make up our minds and...
No, ad hoc would be just a few months.
It's a temporary thing usually.
Well, the Parklets ad hoc, how long did that last?
Couple of months.
Couple of months? Okay.
Under the Brown Act, there's no specific time for an ad hoc committee. It could be a couple of months, it could be a couple of years. The point is that, once the work of the ad hoc committee is completed, the ad hoc is disbanded, and that's the end of its service.
And are we obligated to City Council to take the recommendation of an ad hoc committee and?
No.
No.
The, the purpose of an ad hoc committee is to sort of expedite the process and create sort of a two-person group of the council that's going to be direct, that's going to have the staff interaction, receive feedback from staff, provide direction from staff, and do that on an expedited basis so that it doesn't have to occur at every City Council meeting.
Can we include residents on the ad hoc?
I think if you were, if they were formally part of a committee, that would be the, a Brown Act committee. But of course, the ad hoc, if you want it to be just a, an ad hoc committee, like the Parklet ad hoc committee, of course, the ad hoc could meet with members of the community and receive input from the public.
In normal process, would the public not have input?
No, there's no reason why the, an ad hoc, some ad hoc committees, you know, dealing with sensitive subjects, they may just meet with staff.
In normal process, town halls, town hall meetings, public education, that sort of thing, is there, we, we will receive input from the public in that process as well, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I think the ad hoc committee would be the designated body to attend those workshops and public forums so that, you know, that's the two people on the council that you know will be there, and you're not inadvertently creating a situation where a majority of the council is at the same meeting together.
Which means that other council members couldn't be there at that meeting.
That's right.
So, well, I would want to be a part of that conversation, I think.
Yeah, I think we should move this to the next meeting then and do the proposal for a parking committee.
Okay, we can work with staff to look into that.
Okay. Apologize. And we'll look at the consent calendar. Before we do that, Councilmember Lando, would you like to say something?
I will be recusing myself from Item I only due to a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, and call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
Please vote. Okay, motion carries.
No unfinished business, new business. Item L, purchase and installation of a new voice over Internet protocol telephone system for all city facilities. I call upon Assistant City Manager Gallegos.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm really excited to highlight the citywide phone project and more importantly, have council consider an award of contract for the city's new citywide phone program. While this project has been a City Council goal for some time, I personally want to thank Mayor Moore for his continued advocacy and support for this project. Your IT background has really helped the city become hyper-focused on technology, specifically the many ways in which technology can enhance the service we provide and the work that we perform. There's no better project to emphasize this fact than our phone project, when one considers that we have not updated our phone system in over two decades. This is also a project that cannot be performed alone. The complexities of a project like this are many, and so early on, we developed a staff team comprised of management analysts Jennifer Robles, Kevin Edwards, and Sean Sabo, whose objective on paper was simple: install a new phone system that is reliable, secure, and enhances the internal and external customer experience. Because of these many complexities, the city needed to hire a project manager, client-first, to ensure that we had a technical expert that could help us steer us towards a phone system for the foreseeable future. I also wanted to underscore the city attorney's team, especially attorneys Amy Grayson and Craig Fox, whose tireless work helped shape the final agreements, which can, which we can attest was, was no easy task. So tonight, Jennifer, Analyst Jennifer Robles and Kevin Edwards, we will present to you, along with the president of Intellisys, Rick Ball. of Intellisys, Rick Bowser, some background on our current phone system, the process of selecting a phone system vendor, and the enhancements it'll bring, as well as the steps for implementing this new phone system. Of course, implementation is all predicated on your approval this evening. We will be happy to answer any questions during or after the presentation. With that, I'll ask analyst Kevin Edwards to get us started.
Good evening, everyone. City Council, Mayor Moore, and City Manager Jill Ingram. I'm Kevin Edwards, a management analyst assigned to the Police Department. I specialize in IT deployments specific to police departments. Under the guidance of Patrick Gallegos, we've been tasked with identifying deficiencies within our telephone systems and then working on remedies to rectify those deficiencies. I understand many don't share my love for technical deep dives, so I'll keep the technical aspects brief and kind of superficial in light. Our first technical issue? The ON button. Here's where we are today. It is a complicated, multi-tiered phone system with two points of ingress and egress for the city. Your phones go out via a GTT and Frontier line at both PD and City Hall. These lines have been problematic throughout the years, and maintenanceing those lines is cumbersome at best. Problem is, there are many hands in the pot. When we have a phone outage, it's either Synoptex's issue, GTT's issue, Frontier's issue, Mattel's issue, Granite's issue, or AT&amp;T's issue. Over the years, we've created a system that is not quite interconnected, but lots of vendors have their hands in the pot. The goal, as we transition to a new system, is to eliminate these complex interactions and simplify how our phones work. I can articulate or illustrate some of these issues with a couple pictures. Here you see three different deployments within our city. To the left is the phone infrastructure at the tennis ball... I'm sorry, the tennis pickleball center. If you look closely, you can see an AM/FM radio that functions as a core component in that system. Needless to say, it needs to be retired. To... In the center, and I'm sorry to put this... Well, it probably benefits you. You'll see the intercom system at Lifeguard's headquarters. I've researched that model, and I couldn't find a single piece of information on it, likely because it predates the existence of the Internet. On the far right, you'll see the Police Department's deployment. I had to enlist the assistance of two very talented, slightly older phone engineers to figure out what that was. They called it a analog pushpin line.
Yes.
As you can see, if you were to zoom in a bit, some of the tags on those lines are for a company called GTE. They went out of business in the year 2000. Our phones are the 1997 Honda Civic of telephone systems. It works very well for a long time, but it's starting to show its age. Some of the functionality isn't working. We're paying a lot of money to maintain it. I think we're in a position where it's time to retire that vehicle and look at something with a few more bells and whistles. With that said, I call upon my colleague Jennifer Robles to speak on the RFP process.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, members of the city council, and City Manager Ingram. I am Jennifer Robles, and I'm one of the management analysts assigned to the City Manager's office and also part of the IT committee. As my colleague Kevin Edwards alluded to multiple times through his presentation, due to the complexity of the project, the city retained client first as a project manager to assist in the development of a request for proposal. Part of the process included individual department meetings where staff had an opportunity to share some of the features that would benefit and enhance the services specifically in their department and incorporated that feedback into an RFP. Once the RFP was released, the city received a total of 10 proposals that were competitive and evaluated based on functionality, pricing, reliability, and manufacturer references, among other factors. Through this evaluation process, the top four vendors were selected to do an onsite demonstration. Staff members from each department participated in the demo and had an opportunity to test the equipment, ultimately selecting GoTo as the new platform or software for the city and Intellisys as GoTo certified integrator. An added benefit of selecting GoTo was the option to participate in a TIPS contract. TIPS stands for the Interlocal Purchasing System and is a national purchasing cooperative, offering government entities a lower monthly service rate exclusive to TIP members. What does this mean for the future of Seal Beach? We're all extremely excited. I'm sure I echo the sentiment of Mayor Moore, who's been a strong advocate and strong collaborator with our staff through this process, and we are ready to welcome a new era of reliable and secure connectivity. At this point, I'd like to introduce you to Intellisys President Rick Bowser, who will be sharing some of the new features that GoTo will be offering to the city of Seal Beach.
Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. So the only thing I might disagree with so far is I would call it a 1987. So the new system is essentially cloud-based, where the entire industry is going. Some of the things I'll bring to you, this is a good example of folks that answer the phone often in some of your areas, where it has an embedded contact system, where you can enter information about callers when they call in, and that'll do two things. One is you can record certain notes or things about callers, like maybe they're having trouble with a certain type of service, or maybe there's... They've reported on potholes or something like that that you want to have a history of. You can also see the history of interactions that the people in the city have had with that person, so it can be a quick thing. If you know someone's frustrated and you see maybe they've called about a barking dog 10 times, well, now you understand they're calling again, same thing, and you can treat that a little bit more gently, if you will. And then just have the ability to just get a little bit more information, as you tend to do that type of interaction. From the standpoint of how a cloud system works, so today, your phone system is all in your facility. If anything happens to the system, it goes down, you have multiple vendors working on it, your city is without services. By migrating the system to the cloud, which, again, is where the industry is going, the system actually exists in data centers that are replicated throughout the country so that there won't be a single point of failure. And even if you lost your existing ability to access the site, or like we saw in COVID, where people may or may not have been able to come to work, simply by having an Internet connection anywhere, they can go ahead and log in and be able to conduct city business without needing to be here at the facility. So without getting too technical from standpoint, I'd be happy to address any questions or comments or concerns about anything we might talk about or how the new system would function for the city.
So everything is connected into the cloud, which would be... Do you own the servers, or is this distributed AWS or something like that?
It's actually GoTo is the provider, so we're the local integrator. So GoTo does a great job of building a product. We're the guys that come in and connect you to it and make sure your connection to them is solid, works well, and...
Got it. So we locally are going to be reliant on an Internet connect to be able to... For our phones to work and be able to access our system, correct?
Well, you have a couple... So any type of Internet connection? If your Internet went down, you can actually run your system on smartphones. Keep in mind, even if your Internet goes down, your entire operation, your greetings, your voicemail, all that still exists in the cloud, so people will have access to that. And if you even have... You know, maybe you don't have a smartphone app, or you don't want to put it on there. You can even have your extension forwarded to a cell phone, so you'll still get calls. So you have that level redundancy. We also built within the platform that there's local redundancy. So what that means is if your Internet's down, your connection to the outside world is down, but you could still call back and forth between extensions, and you still have the ability to dial 911 in those cases. And none of this, by the way, touches the 911 operator system from the PD side.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for coming today, and thanks Jennifer Robles, Patrick Gallegos, Kevin Edwards for spearheading this phone system effort. I was fortunate enough to help participate in the process and ask questions, and I'm confident the city chose the right solution here. Many companies are using voice-over IP, and it allows their employees to be more effective, not to miss calls, avoid unwanted spam calls. And one of the nice features is the ability to get your phone messages by email if you miss the call, and then you can respond or forward the call to the appropriate person. And I remember talking about a new phone system about five years ago, and we were having problems. And the good news is the technology, I think, has gotten better.
Yes.
And it's improved since then, so the city will have more options now available. And thank you again. I look forward to getting off with our old 20-year-old's phone system. Thanks.
My cellphone works.
And a call for a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Second. Please vote. Motion carries. And now adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, June 26, 2023, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you.